Right now, right? How many seconds was that? And we can say before we get to that.
Yeah.
Against how long this is going to be before it changes.
Right.
It doesn't take long.
Okay.
Right. Welcome everyone. I would like to call to order a regular meeting of the Saratoga Springs Public Library Board of Trustees today. February tenth. Let's begin. First item on the agenda is the approval of our January regular meeting and executive session minutes. There were a couple of changes made today. Who's on? No? Here's something. Anybody have any comments or questions? And if not, would someone like to make a motion to approve? Those minutes?
Concluding.
Thank you, Terry. Thanks Carol. All in favor?
I am.
Thank you. We now have the approval of the expenditures. Prepaid check seven three one one nine to seven three one two four totaling seven thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars and four cents. February warrants check seven three one two five to seven three two zero eight totaling one hundred and forty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. And supplemental warrants checks seven three two zero nine to seven three two zero seven three two one zero totaling seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty-eight cents. Those were in addition today. You haven't seen those. Dawn has pulled them up on the screen. Does anyone have any questions? Or comments about expenditures? I just, um, the SaaS stuff that's always been there, are you, we talk, has there been a change at all in? The check number seven three one eight seven, the automation? Is, is there any new information on what's happening with that? With the, was connected to the?
Yes, yes.
That wasn't going to affect us for a while.
Yeah, right. And, yeah. And I think there's not going to be any change for next year.
Oh, okay. I agree.
This is just our usual, usual.
Yes.
Anybody else have anything?
Yeah.
And if not, would someone like to make a motion to approve these expenditures?
Make that motion.
Okay. Second. Nancy, all in favor?
Aye.
As is next is the approval of the financial reports, the prepaid check report, February warrant summary sheet, budget report, the income report. And we have two gifts to report, a fifty dollar gift from your lab and a fifty dollar gift from Carol Reynolds in memory of Lynn Herrick Black.
Is there something wrong with the rental income?
In there? Where, oh, I forgot, zero. Yep.
Oh, yeah, there's a.
Yeah, no, that's, they're still fifteen, fifteen dollars.
Nice catch, Frank.
Yeah.
Um. Anybody else have anything? No? All right, would someone like to make a motion to approve those financial ports, reports with the correction to the rent for January twenty twenty five?
Make them.
Do get out.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the expenditures with the correction for the rental of January twenty twenty five.
Thanks Carol, second please. And all in favor? My report. Really elements of my report are, are going to show up. Over the course of our meeting of the things that I've been doing, the other thing that I wanted to add is I appreciated that D'Ar report from Ike. He included a whole packet from Stephanie Cole and the attorneys in the western part of the state about the changes that are potentially happening federally and the impact on libraries. I also wanted you to know that the ALA, the American Library Association, has asked for people, they've created a new campaign, show up for our library campaign. That they have launched for library advocates to influence our elected leaders and policymakers. And as Ike pointed out, I think, is it in your report, Ike, that you mentioned that, that we don't at this point receive federal funds? That some of those changes will not necessarily directly impact us right now, but of course they're going to impact the larger community and other partners that we work with who potentially do see federal funds.
Does SaaS receive federal funds?
Well, they, I shouldn't say no. On occasion they'll do grants. So for example, there's a program called the Big Repetitive Protection, they're applying more money from NH to do discussions. That might be how the, and there are a few programs like that, but it's not a really a direct source of their operational.
And for, to just remember that right now, federal funding for libraries is guaranteed each year by Congress and authorized under law. So we don't know where it's going, but some of what we may feel reactive to is not necessary, necessarily, but as the law stands.
And you, like the IMLS, which is the federal agency for libraries and museums is probably one that is in danger of.
Right.
What's happening.
But it would require Congress to actually act, right? Right. Public comment? We have no one here for public comment. Correspondence and communication. I received a couple of different things over the course of this month. Some of the rest of the trustees also likely received. One was from a library graduate student who was doing some collect data collection, looking for feedback on, from me and other boards around their involvement in board director, library recommendations for someone who happened to go into rear in administration and libraries and the relationship between our board and the director. And so I responded to all of her questions and I also sent her the board review document that we look at together in, in June when we think back and looks at what our goal is and our responsibilities as trustees are. So she was very appreciative and we had a nice dialogue back and forth. We also had someone who had a patron who had some concerns about a book club. And so that I passed on to Ike who could share with the people who are organizing that. Anybody else receive any correspondence or communication? Okay. Okay, Ike, your report.
First thing, are there any questions about my written report? You have the items for later on for action items, but we did have the, the bid opening for the elevator project. There were three bids, quite a range of a hundred thousand dollar range from top to the bottom. The architects, as you see in the packet, is recommending that we go with the apparent lowest bidder. They don't check all of their numbers and feel like they can do the work for, for that amount of money. So that's a, in a jent, I have a little bit later on. One thing that is a potential obstacle in this, in this process is that in the bid documents that I haven't seen before, the elevator manufacturer is asking for a pretty substantial advance, which is not really something that we can do, give people that amount of money when it might be months before we see something in return. So I did reach out to Stephanie Adams to see how we could handle this. And her suggestion was that, that if we, if they insist on something like that, we put it on the investment or lawyer's escrow account until, until the thing is actually manufactured.
Is it a certain percentage?
It's a better.
Excuse me?
Fifty percent.
Wow.
Before they, is that so that they can buy the?
That's what, that's what we don't know. If they just want to make sure, because it is a, a big dollar, a high dollar.
Yeah.
So they want to make sure that the money is there or whether they need it for cash flow. But I would sort of think that an elevator manufacturer probably has the resources to, and they probably just want to make sure that the money is, is actually there.
Okay.
The audit, we have the, we don't have the final financial statement yet, but we've got the, the draft. And you saw my management discussion and analysis of it, which basically summarizes the forty-five page document that we're going to see. If there are any questions about that, I'm happy to answer them, but it looks like we're, we continue to be in a good financial position. Our net position grew a little bit over the last year, which is where we want to be, I guess, on the positive side of things. Steph were very, very relieved to see that this CDPHP Albany Med thing got resolved because there was a, you know, they, most of our staff who have health insurance are covered by CDPHP and Albany Med, as you know now. The system includes both the, the organ hospital, the life support hospitals, and so that many other options. I think it's been a network, but, um, so the Marshall Sterling folks were there just to reassure us that there would not be any gap in coverage and that we would have the opportunity to change carriers if it did come to pass that they could not come to agreement. But it seems to be a bargaining tactic every single time one of these contracts comes up, there's some big public outcry. Or who's going to be, and, uh, resolved. The next. And then, as Kate said, I included in the packet some information from, from Cole Adams about what some things that we might want to be thinking about. Or depending to how we deal with all of this, this flurry of executive orders that are coming and, 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 you know, figuring out what the impacts might be on us and preparing to work with our partner agencies. I mean, there are so many social service agencies there that, uh, who do receive federal funding that, that it could be very impactful on them. And so we're thinking about how we might be able to be supportive and continue to work together. If these things actually go through. The impact that they seem to have on their own.
Is, is there any specific theory you have right now or?
Right now, no. I mean, I think, I think we're in a pretty good position, but like I say, you know, a lot of the, the social service agencies that we work with, yeah. You know, it's not thinking especially of the agencies that, that work with the unhoused population. And that really could have an impact on, on their operations. The other thing that we are seeing, starting to see now is that some of our English language learning students are not coming to classes. They're not going to their two group sessions because they are nervous to be in any kind of governmental entity. So, so in that way, it is having an impact on what we do, but it, right at the moment, it seems to be. Right.
Anyone have questions for? I just have the approval of the annual report, which is later in the agenda.
Okay.
Um, so in our factual packet, you're next, Dawn. With the snazzy.
That's my monthly AI insurance there. Just, um, um, Scott, this, this one, I found, I can, library computers are being replaced, so it's coming along. We've got probably half of the computers done and we're going to order another batch for replacement. The, uh, the thing to mention about that is once, once we eat up all of our Microsoft licenses and changes that took place several months ago now, the Microsoft office suite that we install on the computers doesn't come to us at a steep discount as we've seen over since I've been here for ten, twelve years now. We've been able to get it through vendors. The Microsoft gives the vendors a deep discount, they pass it on to us, but that's for whatever reason, we don't fall into that nonprofit group anymore since six months ago or so. So the, the number in the center here reflects what we used to pay for, for the didn't put up how many public computers we have. Probably about thirty or thirty-five public computers. So we were paying about seven eighty to replace all of those licenses. Now it's going to be four, forty-seven hundred or so to do that. And those public computers will need to be replaced as part of the upgrades that we're doing for their windows. Ten days out, they're, they're going to be pushing about, about October this coming year or this year.
And so are you, I know there's been questions of whether or not to even leave as many public computers on that floor in terms of.
We have.
How many are confused?
We, we're thinking with the upgrades that we're doing in the building, I don't think it's going to be in time, any of that. And it changes if we did do any construction or resize that public computer area. So it's a discussion, you know, we could have about current space and how many we need to replace. And we could also go to subscription based models as well, which brings other issues like, you know, who, what account logs into that subscription? How does that manage? What happens when somebody uses it? Where does that go up to the cloud? And can anybody that sits at that same computer see that same subscription?
Yeah.
A bunch of stuff to model. We, we didn't go down that route, yes.
Right.
The weather station, I've, I've had that online for a couple, so, couple months, couple, two months. I was gonna, we still need to put it in its final form, so I haven't really done the ribbon cutting or anything like that. But I thought I'd include some of the things that we do with it currently. It's kind of a, it's not a tech project that would be used by, we can do programs, you know, and different things. But right now, we just have it on our staff page for, uh, and then the final push to get the weather station was the air quality from, over the past summer. It got pretty bad. This particular station has two air monitors, one in the building, one on the water cooling tower to monitor things for.
That's nice. Great. Anyone have anything for that? Now we're just going to be ribbon cutting for.
Oh.
I'm wondering.
They up to the roof.
Listening. Trevor, anything you want to draw anybody's attention to?
I was a fairly straightforward month as far as AOS is concerned, across the board between circulation tech services and outreach. And as I mentioned before, um, you know, we're noticing some changes in attendance for our ELL students. You know, we had been looking into finding alternate space in the areas potentially at SaaS or using some space for tutoring because we were growing beyond, you know, the availability of rooms here in the library and that plan is currently on pause. So aside from that, we, you know, having some shipping delays from vendors that threaten to impact book clubs and getting Saratoga Reads books here in the library anytime, I think we weathered the storm with A and, um, yeah, that was January.
Okay. Anything for Trevor, if any has? Right? Um, Catherine?
Nothing too much. The Saratoga Reach Junior second discussion is going on right now. They were able to bring in the author of soon, you know, their, um, and she sent us free bookplates and I think bookmarks or something for every kid. So not only did she donate her time because we were doing her book, but she sent us some lovely things. So the first discussion went really well. The kids really liked the book and Kate said that they were having some really interesting discussions and they, they had prepared so well because she pops in and out of the different breakout groups. And she's like, yeah, I go in and the kids be like, well, okay, it's one seventy-three. She's a hurting college, so, um, it's going really well this year.
Do they still work with the Skidmore students as a part of it?
Yeah, so Catherine over at Skidmore does the heavy lifting on all of the, um, like discussion questions for us. And then she has students of hers that are the leaders for each breakout group. So we take about seventy, seventy-five kids and they all do part of it in large group and then part of it in breakouts. This coming Sunday will be the reception, so they do the discussion on Zoom, which is super convenient for people who work or live far away. And then they get to come together on Sunday to celebrate and everyone's welcome if you'd like to come.
Nice, snow permitting?
Yeah.
Yeah. Great. Anyone have any? Other questions or anything?
I mean, look at that, people in the middle of your homes. There was two of them. They came off the ramp.
Okay. Jamie, anything you want?
I just want to point out, my librarian Caitlin is doing a, a program, working with a Skidmore professor. It's a three-part program called We The People. And the first one, which talked about the three branches of government, was very well attended. We've got so many positive comments, so just wanted to say great job to Caitlin for, for thinking of this and bringing it here. And then Michelle in the Saratoga Room put together a display and WMHT picks us as one of the winners. And Jean actually from the board was the person that said, hey, you know, like I would love to see more displays from the Saratoga Room out on the floor. So because of Jean, we pulled them out to the floor instead of just in the room and, and now won, yeah.
Nice. And when is it due? Is that coming up?
That's February twenty seventh.
Okay.
Yep.
That's great.
Yes, please come.
That sounds great. And how are the Saratoga Reads events going?
Good, so we're contracting with, um, well, okay, so the first one really is this Wednesday and that's like the, the kickoff kind of, and that's vinyl Evolution is doing a concert here on music from our book. And we are in the process still of finalizing the final capstone event, which is going to be having TJ Klun come to Saratoga and he'll speak as Skidmore guest. So we've, you know, sent in our side of the contract, we're waiting for him to sign this side of the contract. And as soon as I have all that, I'll get your formal invitation.
That's very good.
Yeah.
Which month are you hoping?
What was that?
Which month are you hoping to do?
March twenty ninth.
Nine in March.
It's Saturday.
What fun.
Yeah.
Great, does anybody have anything for Jamie? It's really. And there's a picture also. Rick, anything you want to?
Yeah. So towards the end of my report, I have been informed that I have an accurate number for new employment spending.
Okay.
Although we continue to have people decline our offers and cleaners and maintenance due to pay scale issues. Other than that, our month is outside of parking lot.
Yeah.
With our short staffing, it's all hands on deck. One guy needs to be off, but the rest of us, we're all in here working, just trying to do the best we can.
Looks like you're going to have somebody come and take it away.
We've worked on that today, but they're very extremely busy. Even the owner of the company was working in a big Michigan loader because they don't have enough people to deal with all the snow and all the calls they're getting.
Nice.
So, but we're set up for next week, although we're supposed to get a big win this weekend again. And do the best we can. They did have an equipment breakdown this weekend, which wasn't nice, but they have to deal with it and we keep moving forward and especially again.
Okay. We have, the board has been being updated by, I came back and laid it different times about the, some of these issues with the pay scale. And we know it's something that we may have to address. But I think it's important that we have to tell you here about.
Absolutely.
So, um, we'll plan on doing that in, in March. Does that seem like a good plan?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I, I understand frustration and, um, I wish you luck. I have other people. Okay, next is, we have this management discussion and analysis that Ike included. So Ike, is, is that just something that you want everyone to, to read on their own, to be prepared when the accountants come or?
I think so. And we'll probably have them, as soon as we get the, the, the final financial statement, this will be included. We'll probably have them come to a budget workshop.
Right, okay, perfect. Um, so if we continue to scroll down. Um, I believe the next thing is the architect's letter, the February seventh. Is that what everything else seems next?
Yeah, that's the next thing in the packet.
The same thing in the packet. Do you, I guess, let me go into the agenda and then we'll come back to that. So the strategic planning committee has not met since the survey went out, but the survey is finished. And as of the end of January, so I'm sure Jen is going to start making a plan to have a meeting. And also starting to look at.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think, what was there, four hundred and five people generally who completed the survey?
Yeah, something. It was, um, I thought I had it up here. Forty twenty-five or somewhere.
Yeah. Yes, yeah. So we know that it's, it, um, it's not necessarily statistically significant, although Jen pointed out an important thing to keep in mind that we were asking people to complete it for a family. So it's actually kind of equal to more people than who necessarily complete their package. The other, um, other special committee is the branch expansion committee. So the, the board has, was given access to the Google Doc that we have been using in that committee that includes our minutes and includes, it includes a lot now, includes some fiscal pieces of information that Ike and, and all of the department has worked on for us to get a sense of that. Some conversations that I've had with a realtor, some of the zoning things in the neighboring communities. And so I think that where we're feeling like as a committee, that our next step is that we would, and we do know that from the, from the survey that was sent out, that sixty-five percent of people supported the idea of a possible second location. And in the staff, um, the staff survey, were the two thirds, Jen? I don't have that in front of me.
Forty, forty-four people completed the survey from staff out of, let's just say a hundred, so.
About seventy percent is what.
But seventy percent of those who took the survey said yes to a branch.
So we're still not at all in a. So we're still not at all in a place to say that it's necessarily going to happen. But I think that we're ready to have a sense from the board of of support or non-support for this endeavor. Because this is where we're at, is of this chicken and egg thing. We can't kind of imagine the scenario to get more details without, are we going to purchase land? Are we going to renovate? Or which area are we looking at? Or we even, do we even have the support to do it? So some things that are still in the works are, Ike is still investigating some of the funding pieces. We do know that we're allowed to, which we shared before, with a scope of our service. What is that called? Our Certificate of Service?
Our Charter.
In our charter, but there's some other element of the fact that it sits in the charter that allows us to, that we can provide services someplace else. But I can't think of the language of it. Anyway, we're legally allowed to do that. We don't need to go to, we don't need to go to the Board of Education to say if we wanted to expand to a second location. We would end up changing our scope. Maybe that's what I wanted to say. We would change the scope of services if we did so. But that's where we're at, is does the board, is the board feeling supportive of pursuing, continuing to potentially pursue this? Or if there's still questions, we would like a sense of what questions? So people can start to gather that particular information. Where we left off is, like I said, we have some of the fiscal things in that document. We have wishes. We have imaginings of spaces. We have imaginings of services. Ike's looking more into the funding. When does something need to be bonded? When do you potentially borrow? How does that work? We can't say or go to the public at all with, if we do this, it's going to cost this amount of money because we have no land, we have no building. We do have potential. What cost would be per square foot from an architect? The architects that were working with this project? And some different regions that I've had a realtor focusing for us on. So if you had a chance to look at that document, are there, are there holes missing of things that you would like the committee to keep looking at? Do you have questions or concerns? Or do you feel that you can support a resolution that we continue our exploration?
I just had a question about the funding options. Okay, just that Ike, that's something you're working on now, but about the bonding, I take it that would be an option, that we could have a bond issue? And what sort of approval would be needed for that? Does that need to go? Do we need approval from the State Library or from the Board of Education?
No, I think we could, we could put a measure on our ballot that are upcoming election to, you know, probably more certain, just to ask the community if they would support bonding. The bonds would be sold by the school district since there are taxing agencies. If they, like, with the situation we have here, while the debt is outstanding or while there's still remaining debt service, then the property would be owned by this school district. It's currently until the debt is retired.
And then it appears, I guess, historically, what happened for this particular project is the the board purchased the piece of land near Ice House before any of that bonding or anything had happened. And they did it, right, with a mortgage.
Right.
And, um, and then as the project moved forward, they then did the bond. So that was part of a question of, um, if we found, part of it is if we eventually did find a piece of land, having someone hold that with contingencies around waiting for all of our necessary approvals and things could be complicated. You know, having someone be able to enter a contract for something. Included in that document are the zoning regulations and parking needs and things for Greenfield, for Wilton, if it was available, and not so much for Saratoga.
I think, I know that I have some skepticism about the need for the branch at this point. You know, I feel like the parking situation changing as it did, and we're still going to see how the long-term effects of that, as far as accessibility goes. And, you know, whether or not we need to, you know, we should be trying to bond out to the public to, for them to pay more. I'm, I'm a little skeptical of that. I, I, I'm guessing that maybe, I'm thinking maybe we should be focused more on, on this building, which is aging. And, you know, and things like, I don't know if it's feasible to do a drive-through or things like that, but I'm a little bit skeptical of what the cost would be and the need, I guess.
So I can tell you from the survey we just did that although parking is better in this lot, accessibility to this building for anyone who has mobility issues is actually really hard and not fixable because of our ramp. So when, so even though only four hundred and something people filled out the survey, the amount of comments that are listed in there is substantial. And a lot are around more easier access, more, more accessibility, easier parking, because they don't consider, and, and, you know, Rick, everyone shared how exhausted many people who struggle with their mobility are by the time they even can get to the top of the ramp, because they can't park any closer. So some of it has been, and, and those are absolutely legitimate concerns. Those are some of the things that happened, I think, with why the bond failed in Bethlehem. Was also a much, much, much larger project and a much bigger budget of what they were trying to do. But their building had so many issues for such a long period of time that so much was folded in. It took them to over thirty million dollars that they were trying to bond for.
They were reached, I think.
This is, this is a much, much smaller, smaller project. I think that there's always that question that if, and, and I, I don't know exactly how to get to the answer of it, of, how do you know that people want something that doesn't already exist? And all we can look at is the last strategic plan data of the, the number of patrons in the district that live in different regions. And anecdotal feedback of who's looking for what kinds of services or what kinds of programs. And that in a community that's stretched over a hundred miles, as our district is, having one branch is limiting. When you look at, I don't know if we could, I mean, we could do the data of, you know, Albany is much, much bigger than Saratoga, but there are a lot of library branches. Like what, what, what point population-wise, as the city has grown so far out compared to when Saratoga was developed and when this library was built, you know, what is the average? And it's not even helpful to look at Malta and Round Lake because there's other reasons clearly that was, that was done. So I think those are really reasonable questions. And I don't know that I, I don't know that I have the answer really for them. What we've thought about in terms of size is then something that has one line of sight, that is one story, that has flexible spaces, so that we aren't, both, there's been very conscious discussions and decisions around not competing with what's already happening here. And yet, resource-wise, relying on each, on what services do exist. So Catherine's given the example of whatever a library put together for a story hour, could that be repeated? And same with other types of programming, working with also the, this entire question around people wanting space. A lot of people mentioned on there, all kinds of things around just connecting. Some of the regions we've been looking at are where there's more retirement, where there's more services for older people, or where there are no library services at all. Like there is nothing between our library here until you get to Crandall, if you go north. There isn't one in South Glens Falls. There isn't anything in Moreau. And there isn't anything that services that whole corridor. And so there have been those conversations as well. There are libraries around the state that enter into contracts to provide services for other regions that don't have them. You know, so that, that Ike talked with some of those other librarians and, like Adirondack Community, or SUNY Adirondack has no library at their campus. So, and then in the Wilton, and the Wilton branch. So I don't, I don't know. I don't really, I don't know.
I know, I know. It's, it's hard to know. I mean,
It's hard to know.
Your point is well taken. It's hard to imagine what, you know, and what the costs are going to be. I know you're trying to game that out.
Well, and, and so we were given a square footage expense, which is very high. But in the fact that it's very high helps you hopefully imagine that it'll be less. It helps to not have multiple levels. It helps to not need elevators. It helps to, Ike did a whole plan of potential staffing, so that's all in there. What else am I missing for all of you?
But you broke out those. I, I read the, so the construction cost was just that one figure. And you had all the other figures.
Right. And we can't get into building. Some of it is just doing a percentage of this building as a square foot guess. But, you know, we can't get into the what kind of an HVAC system is going to cost or any of those kinds of things without having more information.
I do think you'll hear more from the community. So four hundred and five people responded, or community families, which is not a big number. But I do think, I think it's about your wallet. And I think if it depends on what you're going to present to the community and how it's going to be paid for, if people are going to pay for it, I think it's going to be a harder sell.
They're going to want to know, like, how much are my taxes?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And, and that's why we can't, sorry, Carol. We can't right now, it wouldn't, we, we can't do that. We can't put a bond. We have no, we have to have it much, much, much more together.
Right.
Um, and what do we have? What do we have as grants? Are there some of these people we can partner with? Is that going to help us?
Right.
That other communities are going to, yeah, also offset some of the expense? What was your?
Well, you know, I haven't really looked closely at all the information. But is there any such thing as even a collaboration? Like you were saying that ACC does not have their own library and the, the only thing with a partner?
Yes. So, and those are, Ike has spoken with the director of Crandall's because there is no libraries in South Glens Falls even. And there have people on their board who have looked at those. We get into some complicated pieces because our library is supported by our school district. So we need to stay within the perimeter of our school district. But there is this, like, nowhere land on that, on that particular corridor.
Right. So there's a section of the town of Wilton that is in the South Glens Falls School District. Crandall is chartered to serve the town of Moreau, but not all of the South Glens Falls School District. So they fall into what is known as unserved, which means they don't pay to support the library. So that's valid.
So the Wilton Town Line is about, is that the the school district line?
No, the school district is short of that. It's, is it?
Kind of northern.
Yeah, well, Ponce de Traver wrote, yeah, that's where it is.
So it's that northern, which lies outside of Saratoga, it sounds like, but outside of any chartering library district.
Where the, so where the, we'll say Town Court is, is that within the district?
Or right downtown Wilton, right, that's in that.
Where the Town Court is, right, that's in the district?
No.
Oh, gosh.
It's very complicated. And, and that's where the population is growing. Because every time they sell a farm, they put up a development.
So there's huge development coming up by the, by the grammar school, by the school.
Yeah, and Ballard Road School is in South Glens Falls.
Is that the Boses? Is that the?
Yeah, and we've had some conversation. Well, we, that, had they announced officially, sorry, Carol, I saw your hand.
It's across the, it's squared.
There is that whole potential, that whole potential new Boses collaborative. And, and we have had those conversations, but they haven't officially stated exactly where that space is. Go ahead, Cal.
I was just wondering about corporate sponsorships. Is that something that could be considered for funding purposes?
Um, I don't, I don't know. The piece about unserved is, is something that shows you that then it is possible that that particular area of Wilton or something would offset for their patrons. So do you remember, I don't know if you remember, we had someone who was upset, who uses our library all the time, can't get a permit here because she's just over that line of the Saratoga District, but there's no library for them. And so they're in that, that, that land that even though they're all the way down there, they, they, they don't have any place that they belong to as a, as a library. So it is possible that, that other districts like that would potentially support, which happens around the state, that, that someone, and so they don't necessarily give huge funds, but they may give some that gives their residents.
People access.
Access.
And I was just asking because like, I know, even though there's no library at the Hudson Valley Community College campus in Malta, it's, I guess, part of the Global Foundries.
Yeah.
They are part of the Global Foundries campus. So like, I don't know how that works, but I was just thinking, you know, you got all this money with people like Global Foundries and stuff, they might want to have a piece of, you know, contributing.
It's possible. We've also, we've talked about it with, with, with working with other agencies. Because I don't know if you remember, but part of this in the, in the, in the early stages was also around, we don't have enough, so we have, we don't have enough storage at all for all the outreach that we're doing. We need, we need outreach storage space. The van needs a home and all kinds of, there's other groups around who don't have storage that is climate-controlled and protected for different materials. And so there were some of those things that we thought about that could potentially happen on the and, and there are, there are things like the Solomon Trust has given the library funds in the past. There are things like that that exist for particular pieces, but we don't have. That's what I mean. You can't go to, you can't go to somebody without a something. It's, it's, it's all upside down about where to begin fields.
So there's no, so, so I think our dilemma, right, is it's, it's so theoretical because we can't, in order to move forward, you have to have some information. But in order, we don't have enough information to move it.
Well, that's my question. Is I don't know, within the realm of what, what we can provide, what are the pieces of information that, you know, that the board would need? That's what we decided as a committee. What else does the board, before we just continue to meet as a committee? I don't really want to have realtors looking at property for us all the time or asking staff to keep budgeting in, you know, made up kinds of scenarios if no one is supportive of the endeavor at all. asking staff to keep budgeting in, you know, made up kinds of scenarios if no one is supportive of the endeavor at all.
So, and then the other piece, just to clarify, is that what we have come up with as a committee is the way we want to move forward or, or are we open to downsizing what we've talked about or like, so in order to come up with a plan of some sort.
Well, I think what we, um, what was imagined, of course, and those are likely scenarios that end up happening with projects. Um, this is though, i- not very big as a, as a library in general, what everyone is imagining. So you could, you know, i- i- and it's not set in stone of what it, what that looks like. There have been conversations around you know, more of the new and popular collection, not every part of the collection.
Yes.
Um, more of, um. You know, you're not going to have every program, you're not going to have every, every resource. But I, I guess what I was wanting to say before is I think that if I had a crystal ball, what people are talking about is the needs of our communities over time. Um, many have to do with community space
Mm-hmm.
that lets people connect and, and be together. And those were referenced in those comments again, again, and again. And, and even with specifics, oh, could we have a game room? Oh, could we, um, have all the climbing structures inside, you know, I mean, people went into their full imagination. You know, um, you do, uh, uh, how do we get more people into a library? Of course, you know, have more branches if we can get more people into, into having this basic library. And, um. So that's where we're at.
And what would we need? We need to have an idea of how much? I know it's going to be an exact figure, but what are the operating costs going forward? Um, I, I don't.
Right, and we have that.
Squared footage is of this.
Yeah, we have, um. John, do you, can you pull up our, our Google Doc? Is that possible?
And you referenced the Galway Library, the new library in Galway. It's kind of a.
So one of the things that, you know, there's been some, um, serendipitous and helpful um, things along the way. One is the staff went and visited all the local, you know, many of the local libraries, small libraries this fall as a part of Staff Day, if you remember that. And, um, and came back with some suggestions and things they saw both for this space and also for a potential, um, other space. Um, so when you go if it's not going to work on your end, I can get on mine down to um. Our current billing is approximately fifty out, fifty-eight thousand square feet and our operating costs are approximately one hundred dollars a square foot. Um. Each of the department heads have put in there some elements. And you see what I was trying to describe in my email, which may not have been clear to all of you. On the left, each of those tabs, can you just click one of them? Don, and show them how it takes you to that particular section? So that it can help you orient through all of what's in there. Um. So they have all done their own possible budgeting, including opening day collection of books. Um, what things are not in there are like the shelving and stuff like that, guesses around that. Ike used all these different, there's, if you go down to Ike's overview of staffing, et cetera, he used all these guidelines of other libraries. Um, and then went through the potential staffing. And so if you continue to scroll down, there's salary estimates. The construction estimate was approximately eight hundred and fifty dollars a square foot for new construction. So four point two five to five million dollars for a five to six thousand square foot building. Five to six thousand square feet is equivalent to, what's our building again? Fifty-eight thousand? About sixty thousand square feet, so, so, um.
It's about a tenth.
Yeah, but I'm trying to picture what would be the closest. Like if you're down in the children's and you've got all of youth services down into also those community rooms. Probably the children's, the children's room through the desks into that little area.
The treehouse.
And the treehouse room and, um, because part of it was, how do you work with? How do you work with, um, what would be as, as efficient, as we've been talking about some of the staffing and concerns here in the hours of the building, the fact that we are the size we are is what means that there needs to be certain levels of staff here as safety protocol. Um. So if you keep going down initial building costs, land acquisition, we don't know. Construction, four point two five to five million, if it's at that high square foot price. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars as a collection. And then Ike put in some, um, ongoing operational costs of what it would cost per year. Four hundred and fifty thousand to six hundred thousand per year. What I can't tell you is what does that translate into as potential increases in taxes if we did a bond? Because we don't have the land and we don't have actual specifics on any of these things. In some scenarios, like in the Galway case, they ended up getting the land donated to them. And then, um, going through the construction process, it all took years and years and years and years. And, um, they did have to go back to the public a couple of different times in different scenarios.
Are they a school district library?
They are, but part of it was they, they changed to become a school. They were not initially.
So that would be just just for operating costs, like a ten, fifteen percent hike in what people are paying. Yes.
I'm also, I mean, I, nobody knows this, but I'm, I don't think that equipment costs are going to be in bargain in the next few years. But I mean, you can't know everything.
No, no, you can't, you can't know, um.
Right?
Right. Right. And what we do know is that though, um, the longer we, the number of years that we, they, none of these numbers will be relevant in two years or three years. Doesn't mean that someone else and another configuration of the board doesn't take it back up again.
Right.
But I'm just saying that everything is in, constantly in, in flux and in, um, in change. And, um, your piece Frank, about the renovations and things here, those are still within the budgeting of what we've been doing for the capital projects. I know, I think the hope was, was not that it would mean that, that those changes wouldn't happen here. It was more that how do we become a resource to more of the community? And how do we potentially offer more easily accessible services? And create a more efficient home for outreach, which has been growing. And, um, for community space that is in need.
Well, you probably need like an expert to kind of game that out then, we'd have to hire somebody. We were asking for a bond. How much?
Oh, yeah. There's actually, there's attorneys that specifically focus on, on bonds and all of that.
I, I just, yeah, I don't mean just the bonds, I mean the.
But we can't even have a rendering of drawings if we don't imagine what kind of land you're on.
Hmm, right.
So what, what are we looking for today?
What I was looking for is either, um, the movement towards a resolution of some sort that people are, are supportive, that we move forward. And if not, what is the information that they don't have? That they want, that I don't want the committee to just continue to meet with, with the same circle of, of information if we don't, if the board isn't supportive of you know, of, of future. That was why we created the committee, was to see. Um, and I feel like we're at that place. And if we're not at that place, then it's, other than this part about the bonding, what are other holes that exist in all of this that the board would want information on? And if you just aren't interested, it's fine to say that too.
I love branch libraries. I grew up with branch libraries. And I, I think the community has changed a lot in the past from thirty years ago when we built this building, um. I mean, it's a tough call too, because you're not making everybody happy. You're never going to do that. Right?
Right.
You put it in Wilton, oh my God, you put it out in Greenfield, it's the same, I mean, I, I, Saratoga's not an option because we're here. Right?
Well, it, it ends up, you know, yeah, you could go to the west side, but really that's not, that's not enough distance for how wide the district is. Um, the reason we've been looking more at the at the Wilton side is partly because in the last strategic plan, that is, um, a very highly concentrated number of people um, as opposed to more of the real rural districts. And you go towards Greenfield, yes, they don't have a library right there, but there are libraries in Corinth and in Lake Desolation. Um, isn't there? Lake Desolation isn't there? Lake Luzerne, that's what I meant. Malta, you're then close to the Malta Library and Round Lake, the Round Lake Library and Boston Spa's library. Um, so, but like in our last meeting, we thought we should ask the realtor to look around Gatten Park, look around the Wilton Y, um. You know.
I say, I see it as a community building venture. Um, but, you know, part of, part of the, um, problem that we're seeing in the future is that we're talking about serving the community that actually at the present time is pretty much a orphaned, uh, and, and unformed. Um, but I think you know, having a branch library in that area, it's interesting that you got so much feedback about the need for gathering space.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think having a magnet for gathering um, in a place like that, where the, the northern, the Wilton area um, would be a real service, um, for the, the future community as well as, 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 you know, who is there now. So, right? From that perspective, I definitely think it's worth further restoration to move, to move ahead to, to their proposal.
So are any feedbacks on location?
Well, there's, you know, there were three or four people who said, Wilton, Wilton, Wilton. Um, there was, uh. Where else? Jen, do you remember in the comments?
To the high school.
What?
Next to the high school.
Oh, next to the high school, yeah, it's a high school. We, we had, we had dreams of, of wanting to be, I think it would be great to be on neighboring land to the middle school. Um, but that's all real residential. It's interesting, the middle school building is on Greenfield property. Even though it's on that Route Nine.
Yeah.
You know, it's a funny, and Daniels comes in, right? And so there's, um, it's, it's just an interesting kind of piece of.
Right. Route Nine is essentially the border between.
Right, right.
Mm-hmm, right.
What about you, Heather?
I guess, you know, I'm I am supportive of this idea. I also feel like the landscape outside of the community is very different from when we started. I don't know if that's going to have an impact on what it would cost to actually do this project compared to even six months ago.
Mm-hmm.
Um. So I guess I have some concern about that and about people's reluctance to add to their bills when there's a lot of uncertainty. So it's less about, like, I mean, I I, I feel like that's something that maybe we need to think about is, is like, I feel like there's a need, I feel like there's an opportunity to do something that reaches out into a place where people have to drive to everything was makes a community hub closer to them, but how much are they willing to pay for it? I guess is my question. If it ends up being more than projected so far, I guess that's that's my only concern about it. Is. Do we, do we have the right reading?
I have no, I, again, I don't know, because we don't have anything to even have public meetings about.
Mm-hmm.
We don't have any, any, anything.
Right.
To, to, to get a sense of that.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I guess my sense of, of where people are at is that is that I'm not going to ask for a resolution now, but I'm also going to ask this committee to stop meeting. Unless we have something that we see a reason to have people spending their time doing all this research and and looking and developing and imagining if we as a board can't see a direction to move forward. So would you like to think about it and we bring it up again in, in March? As to what, because I'm also not hearing a way that, that I, I thought if there's particular holes we can gather information for, that's fine. But if there is a feeling of, I don't know, I don't know how to, I don't have a, have a, have a committee help clarify the, I don't know.
I mean, do you start with where? I mean, I, I do like the idea of public asking people what they want, but oh my God, I mean, you can't.
Which is why they included it in the survey.
Yes.
And, and so we have that data and we have all of their comments and, and Jen is organizing those, so you will all see all those comments.
You've heard from people. You know, I'm always curious how many people look at it.
I don't know, but there's a lot of comments around this question. There's a lot of them.
Maybe we share that with the public and then get more feedback that way.
Yes.
Yes. What about? Feedback. What about a? Well, no, we don't have newspapers.
Um, I, I, I don't think we should abandon it at this moment, but I, I can speak for me personally, and I would like more time to look at, at this Google Docs and go through that, go through it.
That's fine.
Personally. So I wouldn't like to see it abandoned now, but I would maybe like a little time to just look.
Okay.
Look at it more, more deeply and maybe even talk to other people about it, um, and see what they think.
Okay.
Get some feedback.
Um, as we move into the strategic planning tweaking, it is also possible to ask to have, you know, um, a, a couple of group meetings of just gathering some input. Um. But like I said, at some point you're either moving in that direction or you're not moving in that direction. And, um, we, it's the same with finding, looking at land or anything is not wanting to just waste people's time and energy.
So is there a decision around building versus renovating? Did we?
No one seemed to think that, that it was going to make sense financially to renovate. Um, because of what the needs are. One person, oh, I know, one of the other people suggested the mall of could we do a, um, um, a temporary space in the mall and no one wanted to do that either. The expense, the expense of purchasing everything you would need to purchase to, you know, but there is, there is new construction happening there. There is new construction hap- there's several places that there's new construction happening that you could potentially, like Carol said, go into a partnership that it would be a service as a part. That you could potentially, like Carol said, go into a partnership, that it would be a service as a part of. Of that.
There there's also a difficulty now of assessing what any kind of construction cost could be. If, you know, with.
Oh, yeah, with with potential, yeah, potential, which is what it's also been like for several years. So, um, let's do this, let's, if people could spend some time over the next month looking through the Google Doc. And, um, gathering particular questions. But I think we will not have a committee meeting in between. Unless. Did we schedule one?
Yes.
Oh, we did schedule one.
We can cancel it.
You know, like I said, I also don't want to keep asking the staff to spend their time and energy on this. If we don't know about moving forward, so let's, let's put this off until March and. I will, though, continue my conversation with the Realtor who's looking at land, because if. If there's something that exists, it helps frame everything, that that costs that much, and you start to get a summary of. Expenses. Okay, does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, I I I, yeah.
Alright, so let's cancel our next committee meeting. If you wanna switch it to a strategic plan, maybe that's a good idea. Unfinished business is the land sale. We will discuss that in executive session as a legal issue. The independent auditors report. That. Um, the new, so a new business, the New York State report. We need to, um, approve so that it can be submitted to the state. Do people have a chance to review that? Yes, okay, would someone like to make a motion to approve the state report? And second, second, thank you Nancy, on favor? Passes, elevator bid acceptance recommendation. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the recommendation of the, thank you, Heather? And second, thanks Carol, on favor? Um, risk management exercises.
And that was just the information from Cole that I shared.
Yes, okay. Um, if you didn't have a chance to look at that before this meeting, since we just got it, if you could just please familiarize yourself with them in case there are. Changes that we need to address, and I think it also is helpful. That she has some very good points about thinking really through your mission and your values and. Those are things that I feel like you are very conscientious of, and since we're doing this. Slightly visions to the strategic plan, that thinking around there seem, they're doing. If any, does anyone have anything else before we adjourn into executive session? Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn into an executive session if this really matter. Someone like to second that motion, thanks Frank.